Additional information on the front page. Basically on the what they have to do for the application.
Okay.
And aside from that, it's basically the same. It's more in depth on like what additional information. Obviously, just they brought me one like a different format of the application that had. Yeah, not not the it was the other.
Yeah, yeah, it was it was one like that one, yeah.
And it had more it just had more information and stuff that wasn't one that we're all going to be using. So this could just cross reference them.
Yep.
It took more than just putting together.
Okay.
What kind of application Christina is? The Hog Fat Hill. We're seeing it just because it's shoreline, right?
It's not shoreline.
Non-conforming.
I'm sorry, I'm looking right at Anderson Road.
The Hog Fat Hill one is non-conforming.
Non-conforming, I get that.
Because it's 2.4 acres in a three acre in a long zone. And then the Anderson Road one, you're seeing because it's shoreline zoning. It's a downland rebuild within 100 feet. But you know, there has been talk between Jim and I over creating a new application just for the shoreline zoning ones. That's separate for greatest practical extent. It's separate from site plan so that maybe it would have different information that relates just to shoreline zoning.
Right.
But we have an older one that was created when shoreline zoning began. So it's really outdated and old, but it could be updated for more of what we look at in Sogago.
So do they need a pre-application meeting for these type of things?
Jim Jim wants to run them through just like site plan review because we don't have any other process outlined in the ordinance.
Yep.
So I mean, most of the time, they should be ready for your approval, you know, for acceptance of that first meeting.
But it's okay.
Yeah.
Is this the application completion meeting that we're doing tonight?
For 7-11 Anderson?
Yeah.
I think that it's both the pre-application and the if you determine it's complete, then.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow along with. Gary, do we have?
Like a timeline or?
Oh, yeah, you don't have the application completion portion.
That's what I'm just looking at.
Yeah. What do you think about it already?
It's getting more and more detailed.
Yeah, but this is this is.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they.
Yeah. So for site plan review.
What's that?
They go down.
Town decided to do this.
They can choose what pertains to them.
Application.
That's right. Which one they come up with.
You weren't aware of this. What Jim was saying, Jim? The thought process.
And this one with the extension of the.
I think that it gives people larger projects. It gives them two looks at, two opportunities for public readings and notifications.
Is this just a bigger project?
I believe that's what we've been doing it. Ask David.
What's that?
We've been doing the application completions for each project.
Oh, for me?
It's just for.
That's what I mean.
No, completeness.
Is that what I would probably read that?
For, yeah, I feel kind of poorly served by the.
Yeah. Yeah, the completeness application, that's that's what's got to go through Jim. Jim's agenda.
Well, yes, we gotta have all.
But before it comes to the board.
As they completed this application, yes, we do.
But you can do that in like you can enter.
It should.
You can decide upon completeness of application and. A pre-application meeting.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, you can, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, the the pre-application meeting, I think, is more for isn't the pre-application meeting more for people who want to come before the board and get information that they might need before they fill out an application, before they actually get into the job.
When we when we first started this whole new ordinance thing, what they wanted to do was at the pre-application, kind of give the public an opportunity to see what's coming.
Right.
So they had an opportunity to comment, they get acclimated to what the project is.
Mm-hmm.
That's then we came up with the completion, you know, and then I think that some of these smaller projects.
Yeah, we don't.
I feel like it's I feel it's a burn and a waste. I don't want to say waste, I feel it's a burn on the applicant to come and contextually wait two meetings, but we should be able to pound off one meeting.
And if you and if you turn to section seven page two, it gives you the whole that whole procedure anyway. So it's got the pre-application meeting, applicants are encouraged to schedule a meeting with the planning board prior to a formal submission for review.
But encouraged to say.
That's right, it doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to.
Right, that's right. It's it's one of those maids in night show.
But I think with all the majors, there's no more required.
Right.
But these are encouraged. So again, I think you have the opportunity to consolidate a couple actions in one meeting.
That's right, yeah.
And I think with these small ones, we should.
Right.
It's only fair.
Unless you want to do a site.
And it saves that time.
Unless you want to do a site block on something, then yeah. But I feel that these that you have tonight are pretty. Pretty. The only yeah, the only one that I have a little heart for in on is just because it's not your doing, the previous planning board, the one for Anderson is the one that's just, you know, I told him when he came in, I said, probably that wouldn't get approved today with the materials you submitted back then. But it's approved, it moved on, and they're like for extension and.
Yeah.
You gotta live. Sometimes you gotta live with your past sins, you know?
Yep.
Where is that? Complete.
Where are you? It's on it's on section seven page two. And then you get on on it's on page page three is the it's the completeness determination, that's what Jim does.
I don't have three.
You don't have three? No kidding.
Do you guys need updated ordinances?
What's that?
Did you say you're missing parts of your ordinance?
I I need one because all this stuff for general provisions and all this stuff logged in. And especially for the auxiliary, no, accessory apartments, accessory dwellings. That's not, I don't have that.
We we have not updated that yet. That'll likely come after.
Yeah, maybe.
If the town.
Right.
Votes to approve, Garrett, going full time.
Yeah. So well, in in votes to approve or or not approve the the new ordinances.
Right, and so I would have to hire somebody because I can't.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I can't do it myself.
Can't do a.
It's a two-person job anyway to update an ordinance.
Well, wouldn't that wouldn't that be the office doing that anyway, now?
Um, that's something to ask Letitia. I can't. I can't.
So I I don't know what the issue is other than you would cut and paste the new ordinances, right? Into your existing.
It's a two-person job because it changes page numbers and.
It's gotta be all reformatting because you can change four page numbers and it's a sequential thing, so. But that isn't that a? Yeah, no, I see the page number thing.
Yeah.
It you have to go through everything page by page at the end to make sure everything is.
And you gotta change your table contents. No, I okay, no, I get that. It's clerical.
It's a clerical nightmare.
It is.
This is what it is, really.
It's awful.
Sometimes. But you're not printing them here.
Um, we do print them here, the ordinances here, the pages here.
So for what it's worth, I went to Jim Bob's store, the he used to own the printing Cardinal Press for the planning board, the ordinance review committee, and the Board of Appeals. It was like $97 to reprint, single sided, no, double sided, just like this. That many sets of ordinances, so it's not a lot. And then.
Well, if you have the PDF version, it shouldn't be fairly simple to buy. I mean, what you pay for is their time to correlate and then however you want it bound.
Right.
Well, I don't know. Or punched or whatever.
Yeah.
I think I can.
Three hole punch.
Hole punch is just.
Yep.
It does.
Yeah, so I mean, I can do that for us, but I think if we're most people will use the PDF version, a lot of not many people use the paper version.
All old school.
Except for you guys, and I'm just getting mine, because I write mine too, but I'd make copies for all of you.
All I'm saying, I don't know what it costs to run a copy through our coffee, but for a hundred bucks, and you can get 25 sets of our ordinances, that seems.
Well, I mean, you could go to Staples or someplace like that, I don't know what they get 20 cents. It adds up fast.
Oh, yeah, I was just.
Again.
I think we're good with Derek, can please.
Please, I'm here.
Garrett. I'm Tina, I think.
So so what's everybody think about about the the planning board's site plan review application, the new one anyway? You had a chance to look at that, Paul?
I don't know.
I just said, it's just a little bit of change.
It's just adding additional information to that.
Yeah.
And I brought up Christina about possibly double sided printing.
Yeah, I I did that with the last one today because I was Garrett brought up a good point the other day that we have much paper floating around, so. I I it's good that you.
We used to do that, I said, like I said, about three town managers ago.
In that draft, I didn't know if I got a copy of that out, but in that draft, do we require can we require PDF versions that they submit PDF versions?
I thought it's not included in that one?
I don't know.
No.
I did ask for that too, I don't know, maybe you didn't hear me.
I think it would help us all if we have PDF version.
I don't want to let me reading.
The town doesn't have to scan and all that.
A PDF version of the plan?
Of both the plan.
Of all of it, right?
All the towns I work in are requiring now PDF copies of the app of everything you submit.
Okay. As well as the physical copies.
That's not a big deal, it's just.
That's better.
Yeah. I mean, I want it in vapor form, transmitted.
Well, what it saves the town on is if somebody comes in here looking for information, rather than you spending the time to print it, you can give them the PDF version and then they'll get their own.
Yeah, right.
So.
And you know what, if they do a PDF, then I don't know, I shouldn't even bring this up yet. People want it on the website, people want the application.
Well, a lot of towns do that, they'll put the gender, they have a separate menu where they have the materials for the applications so the public can see it. It's public information, so.
No, it is, and I don't mind doing it, it's just I need an assistant.
That's what I'm saying, if you get it PDF, it makes it a lot easier for you to to kind of handle it at that point rather than having to scan it.
Yeah.
Just the same goes handle it.
I think the the other question, we also wanted to know if they had M and A manuals that were current. Do you get any answers on that?
No, I think I probably forgot.
How's current?
I think 2017 was the most recent.
Yeah, that's what we've got, yeah.
So can we go back to this?
Yeah. Site plan review application.
Yeah. I don't know why I. The pre-application stuff should be done by you and you, I would think. I don't know why.
Is it within the ordinance? I think that you guys have to make your determination on whether or not it's a major.
No, uh, yeah, seven, two.
Yeah, seven, two.
I think that's why it comes to you as a pre-app.
Applicants are encouraged to schedule a meeting with the plan planning board prior to a formal submission for review so as to discuss their plans and gain an understanding of the review procedure, requirements, and standards. The planning board may waive specific application submission requirements when the applicant can show that such requirements are not relevant to the proposed project. And that's that's what the that's what's in our ordinance under under pre-application meeting.
And again, it's not mandatory, it's encouraged, but I would like to, if I could, to the board, I would like to have it so that it's encouraged for minor projects, required for major projects.
Okay.
Specifically what? Pre-application.
Oh, it's an annuals.
I'd like to see mandatory for big for big applications.
Too bad we didn't bring that up a few months ago.
I know, but you know, we're gonna, these things are on breathing documents, you're gonna know.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I just feel that like for these ones we have tonight.
So could we have that?
You don't need a pre-application.
Maybe we could just have that as a policy with the board then, right? Or could we?
I don't know, because it's written. It doesn't matter if it's major, minor, or in between, right? It's written, encouraged, so.
Well, I think that's why we tried to get all the.
But I think we try to your point, when somebody comes in and we know it's major, we're trying to bring that to the board as a pre-application. We make the recommendation, whether they follow it.
Right.
They force to walk, they drink.
Yeah, force.
So, yeah, but.
But but then you then you move on to then you move on to the submission of the application and the completeness determination. So you're the one that does that, so if if the application isn't complete at that point, it's not going to come before this board anyway.
Right. Right. Unless they want to come into pre-application.
Right.
And that's what happens, is sometimes we get them and we're kind of like, yeah, really, you want to go as a pre-app, we'll let you go as a pre-app. But you know, the board's gonna ask for more information than we already asked before, but.
So so shouldn't we, okay, so we have a pre-application meeting and we we determine that the application is not complete, like like maybe some of these that can come before us. At that point, should we table the application until the application is completed? Yep. So was that the, you can't really ask that.
Yeah, you you don't have an application that you're reviewing at that point, but you can just table it and just say, we don't need it complete.
Right.
Here's the items we're missing.
Right.
When we finish that, you can come back and we have we have we take it up again, basically. We can open the application and look at it again.
But as a pre-application meeting?
As a application for completion.
Yep.
So you've just added another month, though.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, right now, we have the extra month and we're trying to we're trying to push these.
No, we've added an extra month already with.
Right.
Our application complete meeting.
Right.
And with the pre-application.
And I think too, that again, I'd like, if we get into this later in the sessions, in the season here, if we can consolidate some of this for minor plans, I think we'd be doing us justice, you know? Because I don't think we need two meetings for completion and get into a substantial review.
And could you could head that off probably 90, 95% of the time with the submission of the application to the town planner, I think.
Right. Yeah, if we could have a screening process.
Right, if the applicant's forthright with you.
Yes, yeah, you know, but as you can tell, sometimes it's giving blood out of the turds.
Right.
You know, these people, some of these folks aren't used to going to that length of detail.
Right. Right. And it's to their it's to their benefit to be more forthright, but anyway.
So why don't we just put that on our agenda for our next workshop?
Yeah.
Kind of so we're all familiar with the manual and this.
Yes.
And make sure.
Well, and 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 everybody should be viewing that that section seven, you know, page page two, three.
I think what would be great in the application, and I didn't, sorry, I didn't see this version that came out, is if somehow with minor, we have, I'd like to have a sheet for minor applications to major applications.
If you just said that, yeah.
So for the minor, we can kind of spout out, we can consolidate, if things are complete, we can consolidate these into one meeting.
Yeah.
Where if they're not, they may take multiple meetings, where major, yeah, you gotta go.
Because the way our witness goes through that is a little confusing.
It is confusing, yeah. And I I think a good application checklist or something in the front, flow chart, whatever you want, you know, it really streamlined for people to understand that and clear it, and for the board as well. We go back and look at those things every time, too.
Okay, so obviously, you can't do that until the next year's town meeting, we have enough to give for.
Unless they decide that was special being something.
But I'm I'm just wondering if if the if we would if the planning board would would be allowed to take on that role.
I don't, yeah, I I think you could, especially with these minor ones. I think, you know, I think as a policy, you could just say, you know, you know, we're wasting a month, you're doing nothing, but we could have done it to one meeting, said two meetings, the minor stuff. I think with the major, you want to play by that.
Well, I think for our agenda to that end, because it's a public hearing, right? We need to say, public hearing on this project and discussion and review of this project so that even though it's a public hearing, they know that we could possibly make a decision that night. We should let people know that anyway.
And again, I think with smaller projects, that makes sense. Larger projects, I think you need the break.
I agree, I agree.
Okay.
I'm just, I don't want to get called us to get called out for.
Delays.
Well, I thought, well, no, for moving too fast. Because they said, well, I thought we were having a public hearing. We never have a vote right after a public hearing.
Well, it's it's a public proceeding, not a public hearing anyway.
Unless you decide to have a formal.
Right, right. But but I I like like this meeting is a public.
Everything is a public.
Meeting, right.
Public.
A whole public hearing is what he's talking about.
Right, right.
You gotta flesh that out.
Yeah, and I think you can do it, again, I think you can do it in the application, it would be helpful.
Yeah.
And it'd be helpful for you, I think it's just helpful to get that in a simplified format rather than the way the ordinance is written. Because the ordinance is just kind of, it feels like you get overwhelmed.
Yeah, the ordinances need a lot of work and we we, you know.
And that's the, you know, it's the, it takes time when you're chopping into it.
That's right.
But you can find the shortcomings and then ideally every year, I'm trying to fix the shortcomings in two, three years.
So.
I think that this process, there was clearly things that people wanted to make sure they had said, they had processed, something was clear about. Probably went one step, two steps, but that's fine, because these were slowly.
Yeah. Shouldn't shouldn't give up on stuff, it's it's, you know, it's like everything needs time to work.
I understood the why.
It's just just like the town planner, you know? Right?
I mean, we still.
Oh, maybe we check that out.
I mean, we're seeing the benefit of this, at least I am, I'm seeing the benefit of this.
Your expertise, Jim, is appreciated.
Yeah.
You understand that?
Always.
But now for the major, Jim's top is suggesting that we have two application forms, one for minor and one for major.
Yeah.
And then so for minor, we could have a public hearing, a completeness, and an acceptance of the project in the meeting.
Yeah, and what I would say is that within that application, we should have usual steps. Pre-application, if you want it, basically, it's all written somewhere. But then it's got to be vote, 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 you know, to your point, the public hearing, possibly completion and final in one evening. Yeah, application is deemed accepted or incomplete to the board's satisfaction. There's language in there when you put it in, but I think it sets up the fact that you have an opportunity maybe to get it through.
And we did the other night, but I don't know, that I wasn't comfortable with that, going from that public hearing to doing the vote on it, forget who it was.
What is it about?
Only because I kind of felt we skipped a step.
But we're trying to be consistent.
Well, you know, I'd like to see it possibly, and I know I said the word minor, minor, but I'd almost like to see some of these things with additions, tiny little things like that, it's almost like a minor, minor, where, you know, they're not, to me, that I even mind a site plan, I almost want to build it. But we've got a word.
Think in terms of starting that regular meeting.
Yeah, all right. Start our meeting, I guess, close our work.
He's hating it because we got seven meetings and now he's still picking up the same.
All right. That's that's one of the plans right there, I got one of these one it is. Did you want to put that on the board or something, or? The plan? Is that what I was?
No, the board.
Okay, all right, all right.
Just in case you want to see it.
Yeah, all right.
I I just. I believe I believe you guys. That's just the thing.
Do we have a general side?
You'll have a you'll have a small.
Actually, I require.
Okay. We'll start the meeting. All right. All right, tonight's tonight's agenda is available by the signup sheet. If you have not signed in, please do so. Copies of the agenda are available. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 13th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Sogago. I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order, the time is 6:02. We'll take a roll call of those members here in attendance. Paul White.
Present.
Tina Van Ness.
Here.
David McCarthy.
Here.
Bobby Liberty is absent, David Welch is present. We will acknowledge the town staff present, Christina Robinson, town CEO, Jim Seymour, town planner, and Gary Jones, executive secretary. This is a public proceeding, not a public hearing, and unless the planning board specifically votes to go into executive session, anyone here has the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits or material that are presented. Please notify the chairperson if you are unable to see or hear. The board works from a published agenda, which is available tonight by the signup sheet table. So is there any correspondence? Seeing none, we'll review the minutes. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the April 2019.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Animus? Okay, we're open to public questions, not related to an application. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Mar.
So I was looking at the agenda, and one of the items is the storage property. My question's not related to that. Looking at the agenda, I try to look at the town tax maps on the air debt. And for like six months or more, I have not been able to get on to see the tax maps on the air debt. I don't know what the problem is, but I have no problem otherwise accessing PDF files. And I think there's an issue from the website side as to the availability of the tax maps.
Have you spoken with the town clerk or?
I've sent an email to government, I was promised.
I think, is she here right now, maybe? I don't know.
She's not here right now.
She's not here right now.
But those are those are only assessing website, they're not on the town website.
Right, I usually Google Town of Sogago tax maps, and I don't think it takes me, I don't go through the town website, I know that.
I just need to figure out what alternative to use.
Did you say it was on Donald? You said, but yeah, you can call Donald and see if.
Okay.
Okay. The board just said you use what, Bob, to get the maps?
Google.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Google.
That's not official.
All right. Any anybody else have anything to say? All right, old business, does anyone have any old business they wish to discuss? Seeing none, under new business, map 010, lot 029, C dot 47 Hog Fat Hill Road. Pre-application meeting for proposed duplex and detached garage on a non-conforming lot. This is a free application meeting to determine whether the application is major or minor, site plan review, and request escrow and an application fee to be paid by the applicant. Have the fees been paid? See, yeah. Okay, in each instance, it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of all applicable municipal ordinances and state law. Would the presenter please stand, give us your full name, and state your affiliation to this application? Please remain standing while the board is invited to. Please remain standing while the board is invited to ask any questions or provide comments, concerns, or requests to the applicant or the applicant's representative, town staff, or fellow board members regarding the item being reviewed. At this time, the applicant is asked to give their presentation. Not here yet?
We want the next one?
Yeah.
Just put him on here.
Do we want to wait a few minutes, or we just want to go to the next one?
I think we got other people here.
I'm making a motion, we move this table, this, well, they haven't really taken it up, have we?
No.
Then we move item eight to the last one for the evening.
Okay, second it? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any animus? Okay. So we'll move on to map 014, lot 024, uh, 1 Bridgestone Road, is that correct?
It doesn't have a number yet, it's just Bridgestone.
Okay. An application for an extension to the site plan review application that was approved on May 9th, 2023, for the construction of a storage facility on a commercial lot to construct and operate a commercial garage with material sales by George Anderson and Son Incorporated Excavation Business. Would the CEO please stand and give a brief explanation of the extension request application?
So, Anderson's are applying for an extension to the application that was approved in 2023. There's not much in the file from that approval, and they're seeking their one-year extension.
That's it? Okay. All right. Thank you, Christina.
Do you, do you want me to explain where we are with the DEP and everything?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so on April 8th, Jay Anderson and I met with DEP rep Martha Harris on the site. She was unable to complete her full report on it because her equipment wasn't working, but she did state that she wanted to check the watershed and the affected area that has been cleared so far to see if they needed, what type of permitting they needed from DEP. She hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
What had happened up there with the water?
I'm sorry?
They hadn't gotten the DEP approval, I understand that. But was there a problem up there that, that something had happened with the water?
So, when you clear area, where you have an one acre, you require certain permitting for DEP, and they never got that with the first review?
Furthermore, if they create more than half an acre of new impervious surface in a watershed at risk, which PB Pond is, then you also have to get a stormwater permit, that's with the DEP.
What was the original clearing site size?
I believe it's just under four acres total of what's open.
Did you clear and have gravel on, or? Where your building's going to be and where you said you were going to.
Yeah, I mean, what's, as far as with the gravel, I mean, what's there now is the entrance. We've started to, we got all the sumps cleared, ground, stuff like that. A lot of the stuff that we, after ripping the sumps, is actually seeding now anyway. Grass is growing. But, I mean, as far as like issues, there hasn't been any issues with the runoff or anything like that. That was just one of the, as far as the permit goes, it was just.
Do you not have that drawing?
I don't have a site plan. I don't think there was ever one submitted.
Well, yeah, we had one.
At least we had a plan, I think, that showed the building on the lot.
Show the, show the entrance, proposed entrance, building, site where you were going to have different materials stored, bark mulch, gravel and all that.
And this is more detail on what the building will be?
Right, yeah.
So the way, obviously, they were approved, they're asking for an extension this evening. Our, Christina and I and town manager have come up with what we thought was a reasonable extension schedule, if you want to call it, contingent upon acquisition of the necessary DEP permits.
Do you have an issue with constructing any further? No further construction can be done at this point?
Yeah, you're kind of stymied because under the DEP regulations, you're not supposed to do that.
Right.
So, I mean, they have as equal much say as the town and the situation.
Sure.
Yep, so, no, and I think they understand that, I think they just, you know, I think they want a little bit more in a year because it's going to take some time for them to prepare the permit and then wait for the DEP. We all know what that takes now.
So is the intent to, to give a six-month extension and then the extension that we've avoided?
Well, I think the idea was to give them six months to acquire the DEP and then our one-year expiration would start upon the date of approval for the DEP. Just because we, the DEP is so unpredictable, it might be three months, it might be six months. I've seen stormwaters take up to a year. It's ridiculous, but I've seen.
I mean, but it's the complication that it takes this long.
Right. I mean, if it takes that long, then, then, you know, if we gave them a year extension, but they don't get their DEP permit.
Used up with.
They used up their extensions, that's why. So I think it's, the board can be helpful here, giving them an extra period. Just not saying that they can't do anything until they get the DEP permit, so it's kind of like limbo land. And so all the boards are saying, while you're in that limbo land, we're not going to stop the formal date of expiration until you have the DEP.
When the town should have, like, list the form, or whatever, had been picked up by the former professional staff, that this should have been required.
Right.
So, a little disappointed there, but.
And a lot of town.
The town needs to accept the responsibility for not requiring it back then.
And I, you know, I don't know, again, I told Christina that, yes, the town should be advocating and directing applicants what they need from the state. It's not our responsibility to acquire them, the applicants, I mean, they have to know on their own. But there's fault here on both sides. I feel that they weren't directed and they didn't know, or whatever. And so now, this is, makes the most sense to kind of move it forward, I feel, is that.
So what we're saying is we're going to have six months for them to get the permits, and from the date of the permit, a year.
Yes.
Okay, I can make a motion to that effect then.
Well, why don't we just do from the completion, once they reach the date of the permit, a one-year extension from the date of the permit is dated.
For to complete.
To complete, yeah.
Make a motion that they get an extension, they have six months to get a permit from the DEP. From the date of the permit, they have a one-year extension.
To complete the project.
To complete the project.
Construction.
Any second?
Second it?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And I'm going to abstain because I was not on the board at the time that this whole thing took place, so.
So curious.
Yep. So.
No, that should have been picked up by the town at least, that we should have been aware of.
You guys are good.
Is a year going to give you that time, guys?
I think so.
You made me sit with the DEP.
It was awesome, man.
Okay, is the other applicant here? All right. That one's done, so now we're going to move on to.
Answered.
Move on to map 32, lot 19, 711 Anderson Road. Free application meeting for proposed demolition for an existing structure and construction of a new home in the shoreline zone. This is a pre-application meeting to determine whether the applicant is, application is major or minor, and I think we've determined that it's minor, correct, Jim?
Yes.
And has the escrow and fees been paid on this project?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. It's the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of all applicable municipal ordinances and state law. Would the presenter please stand, give your full name and state your affiliation to this application? Please remain standing while the board is invited to ask any questions or provide comments, concerns, or requests to the applicant or the applicant's representative, town staff, or fellow board members regarding the item being viewed.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Edward Aker, so I'm with Maningle Homes, and I represent Christine and Arnie Collin at 711 Anderson Road. We are looking to demo a project that's already currently existing, and then we are trying to tear down and keep it pretty much the same footprint, just a little bit smaller. We are trying to shift it back because it is inside the 100. There are some restrictions on the property, I'd like to show that makes it so we can't get it outside the 100-foot line. We kind of keep it inside, a lot of it's inside the 75-foot. So, just going to.
Well, it's getting set up.
Yep.
On the, there's public notice file certification, a second page in.
Public notes?
Yeah. The second, well, he's setting up. On the public notice and certification, it says in here, the second paragraph, that it's 1,000 foot for a butters. Now, this is in shoreline zoning, isn't it? We changed it to 500, but it's still 1,000 in shoreline zoning.
Well, I think what happens there, that might be DEP, because they had to get a permit by rule.
I think that is state, doesn't it say? What's at the bar?
I think that's a state form.
Yeah.
And the state hasn't peeled it back yet, there's still a balance here.
But can we not change?
Well, they hadn't, that was what they had to do for their estate permit notification.
Oh, 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 okay.
Not us.
So they're going to have to get a butters notice as a state approval?
They had to do it for, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But we can't go. What's that?
I'm sorry, I just, that was a conflict that I picked up on.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, it's been something that's been a couple of, a lot of other projects I was doing. So, 1,000 feet is ridiculous, and they actually are looking to change that themselves. Which is a good thing.
Somebody goes ahead of the curve.
This one was, this one was pretty attached, I think we did a, it was pretty, bad people reaching out, saying, "What are you guys talking to? What are you letting us know this for?" Yeah, so anyhow, what I, on the, on the plot plan, it shows the existing conditions and all the information's over for the existing stuff, so footprint for the structure for the house inside 75 feet, inside 100. And with the current structure that's made of the house, deck, many sidewalks, steps and stuff like that, it totals up to 2,025 square foot for impervious on the house. What we're proposing is totaling 1,926, so it's reduced a little bit. I think with, with that, just how the footprint worked out, that's kind of what we're looking at. I do know, talking with Christine and Arnie, they would like to be able to use that 99, or whatever I have for square footage left over, 99 square feet. If we can, and maybe a potential patio or something like that, or a deck or something off the front of the house. But right now, currently, this is what we're looking at, we've moved it back from the water to 53 feet back, which the existing was closer, I think it was closer to 40 something feet on there. But we're moving it back 53. There is a restriction there right now because of all the ledge. So the elevation change from the house to the garage, let's just say for example, is 18 feet. So when you look at the way the contours dropped right off real hard, there's a massive piece of exposed ledge right there. So it doesn't work real well to try to get the house back up into it. It'd actually be kind of like a bunker style if you were just pulled it back. You'd have to blast all that ledge out of there. So it really causes a lot of problems for a bunch of different reasons. Brown mentally, I believe, is another big one. But it also would change the way that you would access the house, just drastically wouldn't work. So what we're proposing to do is slide it back, and there's a stone wall right here, the retainer wall. That's where we're going to move it back to and get it, so the back walls lines up to that.
So you're saying about where the retaining wall is, where the big chunk of edge is?
Yeah, so the current existing project, you can actually see there's a light line behind there, probably about three feet behind the house. There's that, you see it right here? That is what I'm getting at. You see the old step design, all that stuff's coming out.
So you're bringing the, are they, floor level of the house up in?
Yes, so that's a great question. So what we're like doing is currently now is down low. The house is existing is lower than the 20 foot that is allowed.
Is there, is there a basement now?
No.
Are you going to put a basement in?
We're going to put a low level into the home, yes. So we're trying to, that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to move it back. But I'm going to give them their height. We're proposing that we do the 20 feet from the existing sole, if you will, the grade, I mean, pulling it back. Stay basically taking what's there now, we're just shifting it back into the grade. Because that's climbed up and allows us to get to that extra.
Little bit higher.
Yeah, just trying to give them so they can have utilized maximized space, as much as possible.
Now, where's the well on your plan here?
Up by the generator.
Up by the generator? Okay.
The current septic system is, in philosophy, we've had an inspector go out to take a look at that. He was able to uncover the pump station, because currently they own the property adjacent to the, to this one across the street. And all the septic is pumped across that way. So we tried to find and locate the septic field, we were unable to find it. So we're, we're going to have to, we're proposing we're going to put a new one in anyway, just because we're building a new home. But it will be pumped across the street and put under their other septic parcel of them across the street. As it's currently is.
And they have rights away under the road.
Yeah, we've got permission from.
We've got that and ready. The only thing we don't have is, if they're doing a new system, is a test fit or, or some kind of analysis that some people need on the final.
So, right, what I do have is a report from the inspection guy, which we were able to get, which basically that's always stating, it's 27 pages and nothing, we didn't find anything.
That's okay, we don't need to see it.
So, but, but, well, now it's probably pretty boring. Basically, it's just a bunch of excesses where we couldn't find anything, so.
Yeah, and the other big thing across the street regardless is they still have to be ideally 100 feet from any existing well, so you've got a well on the property to the south, and their well is high on their waterside, so that septic system's probably going to be backed a little bit.
This is where they did, yeah, there's a new, new building here, so I guess kind of find out where they're at too. This side over here, I believe, is pretty vacant right now, so we're pretty good. What I'm thinking we're going to end up by doing was probably, there's a spot right up here, so I'm thinking we're going to try to get down.
Yeah, it looks like on the contours, you got a little bit of a hill and.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so who owns the road?
I believe that's an association.
It is the association, yeah.
The association owns the road?
Yes, so this is two lots.
And it is a nation.
So, so each, each lot of butts at the center line of the road? No? No, the association actually.
Roadlines are what put in one at a time, that's like spaghetti.
So you actually have a deed to do through the road?
They would have a deed to their front block line, which is on the waterside of the road. Plus, they own the lot across the street. And there is no right of way designated, as you would know, for subdivision there, because it was before that time.
But, but my question is that somebody either owns the road or.
Association.
The association.
Owns the road.
Okay. By deed owns the road.
Yeah, by deed, so they have to get, and they did, they have permission to go under the road to access. We'd need a copy of that deed.
Yeah.
We got a copy.
Of the road.
Okay.
Of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a letter from the, from the Road Association.
But that doesn't, doesn't prove who owns the road, yeah?
So, my concern is this, is that we're going underneath the road. I don't know, somebody could come out of the woodwork. Somebody could have come out of the woodwork down on Northwest River Road here, but they didn't, so.
Do you want to read the letter from the association?
Yeah, just, just something.
Well, you have, you don't have the deed. If you want a deed for the roadway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can give you what we have.
Okay.
But property pins are all there on that lot, because I know where they are. They'll cross the street, I'm not so sure.
They are.
I have a question, if I'm talking, if you mind, on the well and the septic location, it's probably not the required 100 feet, but wouldn't that be grandfathered if they went no closer to the well with the new system?
If they could prove that the system is, yeah, functional, can handle capacity that it's.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm saying from the existing, where it starts now, if the new system went no closer. the new system went no closer, would that be...
No, I think if you have a new system, it has to comply...
Right, the system would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying grandfather the system, I'm saying grandfather the distance from the well.
Oh, I think if there was no other location on the property, they could get a waiver to put it back there, but I think under a new system, they want it to comply, kind of like most non-conforming type thing.
They can explore that more.
Then we, we will, well, definitely will, because if it becomes a problem, where it's going to be, he's going to, he's going to look all that, all the options are, and if we don't have a place to put it, that's a don't look for it. Phil, do you know where the thoroughfare is down there?
I do.
Where is it?
You mean?
That road. There's a section of that road called the thoroughfare?
I'm not familiar with that down there.
Okay.
You're going to have to dig up the roads to go across.
I'm hoping we can, we might not have to, or if we can salvage what the pump lines, force line, it's already there and it's in good shape, I'm going to scope it, so I don't have to dig the road. But if I have to dig the road, it's the last resort. That would, that would be the concern with who owns the road. Oh, yeah, I totally get that, I totally understand that.
No, they have to tear the road up, and they're, it's their responsibility to put it back.
That's what the association letter is saying. That's why it was written.
To his point, if there's a line that's over there and it's pretty clear and no cracks or...
Could you explain a line? I don't...
So you have the force line from the pump station down at the house, sort of, the sewer exit goes out to the, you know, the tank outside, goes into a pumps, pump station. From there, it's a force line up to the natural field, and it's like a two-inch line, so it's a hard line, it's flexible but it's hard, and then they pump it, it goes beneath the road.
And that's already there?
And that's already there.
It's too elevated from a lower level. Tina, what they don't know is the final destination.
Oh, okay.
They know where it goes, they just don't get the final.
I got it.
I'm going to do some exploring once we, once we figure it out, but I'm going to at least, I'm going to try and activate across the road if we send it. So there, is there an easement for that septic system to be across the road? It's the easement, it would be, they own the problem.
In title, they own it.
They own the problem. So they own both, so they wouldn't have to need... But obviously two separate properties.
Yeah, they would have to give themselves an easement wherever they end up putting it.
Okay, but there isn't an easement at this point, or?
I don't believe there's any encumbrances on that lot currently, but because it is two lots, they would give themselves an easement, even if they ever want to sell that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and I guess the concern would be, of course, if you've got ledge, you obviously can't put a septic system on the other side. No, and you don't want to put it on the waterside anyway. Right, you're trying to keep those out of 100 feet, you got no room for anything. But I mean, if anybody were to think about separating those lots, selling them off the septic. Sure, yeah, I think that's the reason why that, that property required that piece is because there was no place to put septic. It's literally all ledge, right behind the house, right to the garage. As a matter of fact, the garage is sitting on it. It's all ledge, the whole thing, so.
This is where we don't want to go down the rabbit hole again.
Well, no, it's just you want to cover, you want to cover all your bases though.
But they own the property.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's a wholly different category.
No, no, we're not going down the rabbit hole, we're just covering our bases, that's all.
But don't go down the rabbit hole.
Well, and the problem is, if it were one lot, I agree with you, but it's two lots of records, so they will have to give themselves an easement.
But that's not a big deal, she signs a piece of paper, it's over there, good, okay, done.
But you just would want to make that, make sure that that is clear, that's all.
But I think what, what we need to do, I would decide, we want to have a site walk or a public hearing on this. Go through the decision of whether you feel you need it, address those two issues and then...
What's the board think, what are you thinking on that, Paul?
I have no particular opinion either way, it'd be interesting to see how it fits in there, but I don't know that necessarily we need to go with up to the...
I wouldn't mind the same, because I have no clue what it looks like, I mean, I know there is a notice, right?
What do you think, David?
That's not a big deal, we just walk down...
Yeah, I still have...
Can I ask you a question before?
Sure.
Sorry, no, finish your sidewalk thing, then I'll ask my question now.
So do we want to, do we want to vote to have a site walk?
I'll make the motion, we have a site walk.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Decide on the site walk time. And then a little later.
Can I ask?
The other side also, we want to have a public hearing on this, right?
Yeah.
What's it like down there?
It's dry right now. It's perfect. It's heaven. I'm going to make a motion that we don't need to have a public hearing on this, I think it's, it's all self-contained.
Yeah, well, it's their property.
Do you get a motion, get a motion?
That was a motion, yeah.
Second it.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor? We're not going to have a site walk. That's fair, that's for now, I haven't got a site walk.
I still have my question.
A public hearing.
I mean, excuse me, a public hearing, excuse me.
Right, I can then, very soon.
So what is this that's marked out here?
That would have been a potential building involved if they could build on that lot.
Correct. They're just designating what is a buildable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the other, the other thing we faced, too, is the setback from the road on both sides, because you've got a seven-five-foot setback from the road, so that's the other reason why, you really can't move the house too much closer than where they are. Trading one for another, basically.
If, if you have to move the septic field back, is that going to, it's going to require a bigger pump?
No, that's, yeah, that's fine, the elevation change from here to there, just location, it isn't much different than it is from here.
It all depends on the elevation.
Sorry, can I?
Thank you.
Do you know where the septic tank is?
Yeah, it's right outside, though, we did, we did locate that.
Is that going to have to be moved or?
I'm going to put a brand-new system, it's, all that's going to come out, what we do is...
You're going to put the tank with the pump already?
Yes, yeah, we're going to put new tanks, completely new system.
New pump station.
New pump station, the whole...
As I was going to say, because the setbacks could change with the tank.
Correct, yeah, we're going to relocate though, last night.
But you're going to, the way it's going to be tough, we're in the stone, but hopefully, if you know where the old line is, hopefully, was that ledge, the old pump, the old septic thing?
No, no, it's, it's down, I believe they have it, it goes down...
Down the road?
Yeah, he had it in front of it, it goes down front and then it just kind of shoots up along the backside of it.
So Christina would, if that, can they put the tank on the lake side of the building?
They like to keep it 100 feet, I think, but if there's no other place.
Well, I think anything over 100 feet, you're in ledge.
Yeah, they're...
Yeah, I'm going to find ledge everywhere, so my goal is to actually, I'm going to try to put it so that on this side of the house, so it's back, nor for, nor closer to the lake than the house is.
Roughly where the chimney is.
Roughly, because right now, probably, it's all, it's all in front of it, it's all up, if the tank's down here, then you pump it up. Because it really comes out, out of the house gravity, and then it gets pumped up across the street.
Does that line, you know what side of the lot?
I don't know exactly what side right now, I have to, I have to look at the recording, and it's just, I think he has the tanks down up front here.
Is there a variance for the tank?
Or the tank?
Well, is there a variance, because they can't, I don't see any way they can get this back 100 feet from the lake, it's just impossible.
Yeah, there it is, there is if there's no other place.
I don't think they have another place, I think you're going to go to his point, you're going to go in the front corner, correct, that front corner.
Exactly. It'll be, it'll be further from the lake than it currently is, all of it.
Your boss has something to say.
Go ahead.
Well, I think the question was, where does the line go from the existing site of the septic tank, where does it go? And it, I have pictures that show that two owners ago, it was put in along the right-hand side of the current driveway. How he did it, I'm not sure, but I have the pictures that show him doing it.
As you're facing the road or you pull the leg?
As you're facing the road, the right-hand side, the septic tank is right near the current front door, and it goes right along the right side of the driveway as you face the back lot.
So somehow, they got it buried enough, because it'll probably be insulated.
That's what I was going to say, you're probably, if you could think about any three seasons or four seasons, you don't want to bury it.
Because what she's referring to is right here, it's running right through here, now this ledge is, there's more right here, so I know that that's going to be, it's very close to the surface.
Just bring it up, so you're not going to be able to put more full fill over.
That's exactly what we're going to do. And I may even be able to find a better spot, because I'm going to bring the whole up, more moving it back, but I can probably bury the tank right here. And keep it on this side, which will be closer to the 100-foot mark.
Is this a seasonal cottage now, or is this a full season, four-season home?
I think it's a four...
It is a four-season home.
Okay, so you've gone through a winter with no worst meeting?
Yeah. All right, so how do we want to move forward with this?
Well, we should make sure all the fees are paid, all the necessary fees, and then I would say that vote on whether the application is complete, schedule a site walk, and then we'd see the gentleman next meeting for running through the checklist and move.
I think we wanted to see the deed. Ownership of the...
My recommendation would be that, you know, you scheduled your site walk, I would like to see, you know, some information, obviously, you want the deed, you want to see the septic location, because that's critical for the property. I did have a clarification based on different plan versions I saw, Ed came back, and just, if we can get a kind of concise summary, because I can see a summary on note 13, but in my note 16, the numbers didn't quite correlate from those confused, so I think we've got different numbers even now than I've got on my plan, on the year.
Okay.
But I got 13, 16, and then they did red on the version I had.
Oh, yes, okay, so this was the one that I had, Chris, I said, you send it back to have mainland revise it?
Yeah, so I don't think we've seen that, but these numbers don't...
Yeah.
I was just trying to figure out how these numbers match up and move through off of this.
Okay, so that's why I, I'll let you just...
Yeah, because I think what we want to see is this lot.
Yeah.
And then the overall impervious cover and what you're done with, if you're going to put the deck on, show us the deck now, so you don't have to deal with that again.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, whatever deck side you have left, show it.
Yeah.
So it's on the plans, we don't have to deal with it again.
Absolutely, okay.
And just make sure that that number is the same or less.
Yes, absolutely, and that's, this, this, this one here is...
Yeah, that's why, I was going back and forth trying to add things up, it was closed, but they weren't quite the same.
Yeah, nobody got a reason.
Do you want to take this? We'll put it on for our next meeting, right?
What I would, to our earlier discussion, what I'd like to, you know, propose to support is that you put it on the next agenda based on new information, but at that meeting, you can deem it complete, potentially vote on it, it's all there.
Right, yeah.
In the meantime, we'll have a site walk.
In the meantime, we'll have a site walk.
That will be a good time for the site walk.
Yeah, so do we have a motion? I think you want to make a motion?
Want to vote on the completeness of the application?
Not, not tonight, we don't have a complete application.
Next meeting, all right. With the information he's requested of the app. So you don't want to vote on that tonight?
Which?
We need to schedule a site walk. We voted to have one, so we need to schedule.
Yeah.
Can you guys do the 28th?
It's the 28th, what day is it?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 28th, at what time?
Do you guys prefer morning or afternoon?
Morning, Sunday, midday.
How about, how about 9:00 or 10:00?
9:00 would be good.
9:00?
I, I have to say I won't be here. I'm being called in. I'm not coming back for the site walk. I'm sorry.
Do you want to go following week?
I'm gone for two weeks, Christina will be back until the 7th.
We don't have any June meeting, because we have a town meeting on the night of our, I think it's on, oh, no, we do have a June meeting, because it's on the 10th, it would fall on the 10th. And our town meeting's the 17th, is that right?
I think that's the town meeting, I mean, we're doing the first Tuesday.
The voting is the 10th, the town meeting is the 17th. Okay, so we do have, we do have a meeting for June.
I'll be back the 7th.
So she's leaving the 24th? It does fall on Election Day or anything?
It may be Election Day.
Election Day, oh.
That's on Tuesday.
Yeah, I thought it was going on Election Day.
June 10th is Election Day.
Yeah, June 10th is Election.
Okay, so can we, can we have a second, can we have a June meeting, like on a Wednesday night, would you guys be okay to that?
Lovely, but what we would do in the past is have the meeting down in the, in the gym.
Fire department or the gym?
Or the...
The fire department back room.
Well, they were using this room.
Oh.
That way we could still have the meeting.
You don't mind missing that stuff down there?
Missing what stuff?
You're saying the town meeting, is that what you're talking about?
Well, where, where is the voting going to be held?
The election is up here.
Up here or down?
Okay, they normally don't do two things like that in one night.
We have in the past, but...
We have before.
We have it recently, I know Latisha likes that.
Is there any issue moving it one day?
Wednesday night is fine, I'm okay with Wednesday.
Can it be Wednesday, the 11th?
Yeah.
I don't know.
What do you think?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Wednesday, 11th?
Yeah.
So your site walks, the 28th, Wednesday at 9:00, oh, we don't know, you guys can vote on it yet, but your meeting's going to be June 11th?
Yeah.
Do you want to try it on a date where Tina might be available?
Anything before the 24th.
Yeah, I leave on the 24th. Do you want to do it?
I, I don't care what day we do it, it's, whatever, do what.
The site walk, Dave, I'm going to be gone, I leave the 24th, I won't be back till the 7th.
Yeah, I don't care. Go ahead. What do you want, Tina? What do you, what do you want, Tina?
I'm trying to hit to my calendar.
A sidewalk?
Yeah.
Public meeting, maybe?
Maybe?
Yeah, because it, it would run on a day of, it would run on the day of the sidewalk if we did it on the twenty second.
I don't know if sidewalks have to go through a paper, I think.
Yes, they should, they're public meetings.
Then, no, we can't, we wouldn't be able to do it before.
Well, you'll have to suffer through.
Whatever you guys decide.
When are you back, Tina? When are you back?
The seventh.
We could do it on the tenth.
Okay.
June tenth.
June tenth.
Okay, guys, I am.
We'll do it nine in the morning. Okay, we do it nine in the morning, I'm sorry.
What'd you say, eight?
Tenth, ten in the morning.
Ten on ten, ten to ten?
Maybe you don't have the doctor.
I have an appointment at eleven that morning, I can do it at nine because it won't take that long.
All right, let's do nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock on the tenth?
Yeah.
If I can't make it, I just won't be making it. At nine o'clock on the tenth. That's all right, I can always listen to what you tell me. I got a feeling what it's going to be like, I just wanted to check.
Okay.
It's nine o'clock for the, for the, um.
Do you have a list of your chain, your requirements that you asked him? Yep, uh, would be test pit and, uh, septic location. Uh, deeds to the road. And then a clear summary of the lot covered.
Yeah, I just got, I'll just send you this version, this one here.
More clarification. I don't know if you had anything else. Then with that test pit, we want, oh, I don't.
I'm asking you to just design.
Yeah, and then whatever deposition you want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you have a test pit location?
He said what, six eleven for the planning board maybe?
Oh, six eleven for the planning board.
So can I make a motion?
Sure, sure.
I make a motion that we have our sidewalk on June tenth at nine AM.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
I make a motion that we.
Continue till that.
Continue till our next meeting on June eleventh. Right? And, uh, and that the applicant will provide a, a diagram of a test pit. Clarify the septic tank location, provide the deeds to the road and a better clarification of the lot coverage. Which will include his new.
Deck.
Deck, if any.
Do you think you would have a final H H E two hundred or is that part of our plan?
Not going to get all of them. That's my goal.
If you have it, then it'll clear up everything.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So in that motion, did you include the fact that you were going to have the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we're going to, we're not going to have a workshop before, so we just come up with a meeting.
You want to have a workshop?
Well, I don't need to, what, uh, Garrett or I just to work.
I'll make sure.
I think it was a workshop at five thirty.
You are, David.
I'll second.
You refer to the roles to the, uh, the right thing.
All right, excellent.
Well, they can't be having a workshop.
We have a workshop at five thirty.
There we go.
I ain't care of that.
Good luck.
All right.
Wow, I got to take a work.
All right, so now we'll move on to, uh, back, back to map, map ten, lot twenty nine. Forty seven Hogford Hill. Pre-application meeting for proposed duplex and detached garage on a non-performing lot. This pre-application meeting is to determine whether the application is a major minus site plan review and request escrow and application fee be paid by the applicant. Have the fees been paid?
Yes.
Yes. In each circumstance, it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of all applicable municipal ordinances and state law. Would the presenter please stand, give us your full name and state your affiliation to the, to this application? Please remain standing while the board is invited to ask any questions or provide comments, concerns, or request to the applicant or the applicant's representative, town staff, or fellow board members regarding the item being reviewed.
Hi, everybody.
How you doing?
I'm David Kimble. I'm the owner of the property. And I'm proposing to build a garage and a duplex. There's an existing house there now that's been standing for a hundred and sixty years. It actually has a cemetery that's on that lot as well. So I would like to remove the old house. I can't salvage it, it's just past its prime, there's just no, and it's, and it's literally sitting on the main road.
Tear it down?
Yeah, I gotta, gotta get it gone, but I'd like to, uh, I bought it off the last heir, Marie Crawford. She's the last heir, she's owned for, well, they've owned for a hundred and sixty years, so she's the last heir. She just couldn't, couldn't do it anymore, so I purchased it off her. I would like to remove the old house, take one of the old granite pieces of foundation, I'd like to kind of where the old house is now, just kind of shift it like twenty-five feet off the road and put a piece of the granite, set it up as a memorial. There's some old equipment on the land, like old iron wagon wheels, just some old stuff you would have done back in the nineteen hundreds. And I'd like to prop that up, kind of make a nice little spot for them, do a little flat, just kind of give a little information about the family that's own that land and found that land for the last hundred and sixty years. And it actually was the post office from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen fifty-four. And I kept, I pulled the old mail slot off the house, the actual original mail slot, so I'd like to keep that. And just kind of give them a little something because there's more people going to be getting actually buried into that. Lots of like one or two more relative, they have people in the family. Someone takes care of it right now. Obviously, I'll take care of it after they don't, but somebody goes in there and, you know.
We don't see it.
Whatever, it's all fenced in, but I'd like to do that for them, but I'd also like to build a garage and a duplex. It's two and a half acres, I know you guys require three. I've got like a five hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage and it goes back two hundred and, two hundred, I think it's two hundred and twenty-five feet. I just had it surveyed. So it's all new, new survey, it's really close to the town map. You know, measurements on the town map, it really, it mimics pretty much that. I don't know, I'm sure the survey probably has a little bit different numbers, but it's pretty close to what you guys have. So road frontage, you've got like five hundred and twenty-five feet. The building's, you're easily could get seventy-five feet off the road, no problem. Um, it's just a memorial, I wouldn't want, I'm thinking twenty-five feet ma, you know, max from the road.
I think it's an honorable thing you're doing.
Well, I'd like to put it back where the house is originally, you know, I don't want to go make it and put it like way in the back forty. I kind of want to put it where the house originally sat. No, and keep it in consideration, I don't want it on, obviously, on the road. The house is on the road, like literally on the road right now. So I just want to scoot it back, kind of mound it up a little bit and do a little, you know, so. That's my proposal, I don't really, you know, I don't know what else, I'm pretty much, I've got, I think I got everything kind of in line, a little bit of the diagram, the septic designs there.
Yeah.
Kind of laid it out where the well's going to be punched in. Um, we got plenty of setback measurements, I got plenty of room there, so plenty of setback from the neighbors' lines and it's, it's pretty much wide open space, so.
Is, is the, is the intent of the garage, um, that's a building large garage?
Yeah, no, I, I, well, I'm, I'm self-employed.
Yeah.
All my equipment and stuff like that, I need a place to put my stuff.
Yep.
I, I mean, on the roofing side and contract, I've been doing it for over twenty years. I'm building houses and stuff too. Pretty much, you know, I've got another one on the one road here, I just finished one on the one road, so I'm building some houses in this area. I live in this area, so I'm trying to stay in the area. But the garage is from my equipment.
Yeah, okay. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
So the only thing I will have, the question I have for the board is first comment I have, you, you said you had a boundary survey done?
Yeah, I'm actually going to be getting an actual physical copy of it, I just got, finally got invoices.
So I'd like, you know, we'd like to have a copy of the actual boundary surveys here, anything is. Um, from the sketch for the board, there's two driveway cuts and I don't know if the board has an issue with that or not.
It's already kind of like that now, it kind of swoops in like that now.
Say it's kind of existing situation, so, you know, as far as the memorial goes. Christina and I talked and we feel it's more, it's not a structure, it's more like a landscape. It's kind of like, it's, it's kind of like landscaping.
Yeah, right.
Uh, artifacts, so I don't have a problem with that either.
Yep.
Um, the only thing I would like to see is you have a cemetery on the property and I think by state law they're, they have to be provided some kind of access to that.
Yep, we're, that's why the survey got done when, when they sold.
They'll have to have some kind of footpath or some kind of means.
Yeah, they, they literally, the, the, the deed is written in cursive, we literally have to, we need to have a survey done because this is.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's really why the main reason why we had the survey done, hey, it's good for me, but at the end of the day, I was, I was happy to say that.
And the system is, that's existing?
No, that's, well, the one that's existing is like, no good, yeah.
That's why the Brandon, uh, Frank, uh, yeah.
Frank.
Frank did, yeah, yeah.
And they designed a new one, so that'll be out in the back.
So we've got that, um, and then I guess the only thing I would just ask is that, you know, some dimensions as far as what you got for driveway widths and stuff, so we know, you got a duplex, so you're going to need some parking there.
Yeah.
Too, and I, your work home occupation, so just, you know, what do you need to get it out? I don't know, when you're out, if we wanted to a sidewalk, just, you know, where does the runoff go?
As I called, there's a, the neighbor, looking at the property, neighbor's to the right, he's got like a wetland property, a pond like right in there. So I would imagine most of that would go down towards.
So the water goes from the road to the back of your lot to the side?
Yeah, it kind of goes, yeah, the road's up higher and it kind of drops, but he's got like a pond, like a pond on his property, so it kind of, kind of runs off into that direction. It's really flat land, really, it's really the bottom hole that he is, it's, it's just old, old flat land, really, it's not even, it's not wet.
I was going to say, do you have any wetland?
No, it's dry as bone, it's just kind of flat. The only wetland ice, only wetland icy is the name is pond. I think it's all kind of going in that, maybe down in that direction, I haven't really paid at it, but that's in behind him, it kind of drops down to like a screen, it kind of runs in behind him off that pond and runs in the back. So I'm looking at the property, right hand side, the pond is there and then it goes out around the back. So that's runoff, uh, we tend to go in that direction.
So do we need to do a home occupation permit for this also? Can we view that? Because it's required.
Where are?
I'm on page four three, and I scheduled uses. Yeah, I mean, I looked, residential uses number six, so.
He's storing stuff, it's, it's what you said, I mean.
Garage, yeah, I want to build a duplex.
Yeah, but we.
So I think to your point, he should just include it with his.
He should.
Literally, he should, yes.
Yes.
With his revised information, he should include that he has a home occupation, just to cover the bases.
Right.
I agree.
I thought home occupation, you did something on the property.
You did, but it has to go planning board, the show.
But, so, no, I'm confused, I'm not trying to be hugging along with you. But if he's just storing his material and his equipment, is that, I'm thinking home occupation like a beautician, David. She's doing something.
I, I'm thinking that.
Still PB.
Yeah.
He has equipment there.
Oh, sorry.
Going there every morning to pick it up or drop it off.
Says that, yeah.
It's, it's creating more traffic than would normally be, so I think.
What is it you do?
If he had, you know, a prolific roofing inside him.
So you'd be storing.
That's what it says here, home occupation.
My equipment, yeah.
Is that, okay, I don't, I don't, I'm wrong by the dip, I don't know the definition.
Book on.
So, yeah, quick.
Four, three, six, you know, yeah, page four, three.
Residential uses number six.
It's required, and I would just say that includes it, if you store an equipment, this is business, they're in the garage. Put it on the application, cover the bases.
Yeah.
Right, Sheila, or Eve, or she, will help you through that.
It's not, it's not a big deal, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Just, just.
The cat's out of the bag, they can't ignore it. Yeah, whatever it takes, I'm fine with it.
But my question.
Then you're covered if it ever comes up in the future.
Yeah, no, totally fine, whatever, whatever it takes, yeah.
Gentlemen, my question is, what does, um, what is, what are we talking about?
Home occupation.
Home occupation.
Home occupation under definitions, occupation or profession which is customarily conducted on or in a residential structure of property and which is
Okay.
clearly incidental to and compatible with the residential, residential use of the property and surrounding residential uses and which implies, which employs no more than two persons other than family members residing in the home.
So he's not doing any, he's storing his equipment.
I agree with you.
I'm just saying.
I would, I, yeah, but I don't know, I mean, if you're storing.
Read, please read that again, home occup.
An occupation or profession which is customarily conducted on or in a residential structure.
Residential structure and property.
Or property, on.
Yeah, or property, yeah.
So it's or property that gets me, and it, it's not going to change anything in his application, he's just documenting it.
How many employees do you have?
Uh, three of us.
Three, so.
But then I have, you know, I sub crew, I have sub crews, but three of them, my, my sub crews don't. Don't use my stuff, that's myself.
Yeah.
All my, all my equipment will be there. My sub crews have their own, their own, their own stuff.
It's just under the definitions, it's, would you say more than two?
Which employs no more than two persons, I mean, but all he's doing is storing his equipment there under his use, but I'm saying it's still a home occupation because he's storing contracted equipment there.
Yeah, it's service, could fall under a service business.
So I mean, it just covered, it just done the actual.
Right.
We don't say you can't, we just want it documented, that's all.
True.
It's just me, my wife, and my son.
Our family, yours is definitely. But if you want to work on something out there, it gives you the right, and nobody can complain, they hear you.
Got you, yeah.
Banging on a piece of equipment or something, you know?
Yeah, that's, I'm pretty sure that neighborhood.
Gives you, gives you the right to expand in the future.
Well, yeah, yeah, if you do.
And for safety.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so we've got a checklist of, um.
Do you need to determine whether you want to do sidewalk and public hearing in this project?
Is, is there?
I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Do you need to determine whether you want to do public hearing and sidewalks on this project?
What do you think, what do you think, say what? Same day? Want, want to do both the same day?
I can't, I have two appointments after.
Okay.
So what, what we're saying for the sidewalk was going to be?
June tenth at nine o'clock for.
Or a city of sky and.
Can you guys do eight o'clock that day?
Could you do eight o'clock, Dan?
Can you do that?
I can do eight o'clock, not happily, but I can do eight o'clock.
Do this guy.
Get up at seven, have two cups of coffee.
Shut up.
It's all knocked out up there too, everything's staked out, you know, everything.
Okay, so June tenth, uh, Hogford Hill. Hogford at eight.
You need to make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion, we do a sidewalk, um, on the forty-seven Hogford Hill on June tenth at eight AM.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
I'm trying to.
Okay.
Do you want a public hearing?
I don't think that's necessarily.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily.
Well, it is a duplex, you might want people in the neighborhood to at least be aware that they're putting in a different type of house.
They still get noticed, they still get noticed.
Yeah.
They'll still get noticed.
Yeah.
I did tell my neighbor, we talked, we voted.
All right, so you don't feel we need to?
I don't, it's a, it's a legal use.
Yeah.
I mean, the only.
Need a motion.
I make a motion that we not do a sidewalk.
I'll second that.
Not, not do a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Thank you, yeah, not do a public hearing.
Some discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion?
What were you saying, Paul?
I was just mentioning the people in neighborhood might want to know if it was a duplex and have a hearing, but that was just a thought. I'm not necessarily voting against it, I'd go vote in favor of it, of not having it.
All in favor? unanimous? We won't have a vote of caring.
Fees paid.
Yep, fees paid.
So I, I just want, hope that when the time comes that this board, actually, we're getting into deliberations. I don't, I'll leave it till our meeting.
Yep, so.
The deliberations about this project.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't want to talk about it.
So I think what we came up with, we'd like to see boundary plan.
Boundary plan, yeah.
Yeah, we should have that.
Uh, dimensions on driveway and parking areas.
The runoff?
Runoff. Discussion or, or summary, something.
You got a fairly.
Little flat area of about two, three acres, right?
Two and a half acres, yeah, it's all flat, flat land.
Application.
The neighbor to the right of me has a pond, so all the runoff, one goes to that pond, then it exits around the backside. Between, between us.
We'll figure it out.
On the right hand side.
I think it's service.
You say a pond is a small pond?
Yeah, like retainers all heavily.
Low fashion camel.
His business.
Yeah, it's probably what it was, yeah, I don't, uh, I'm not really sure. He's got, he, it's on his pot, the land kind of comes out and it jobs in behind the pond and then comes back around, so it's like little streams that run through.
People should know.
Right, okay.
That he's going to run a business out of there, so.
Okay.
Now, what about the question?
So I've got, so I've got the items I have, a boundary plan, dimensions of parking and driveway, runoff discussion, where it goes, and then include that this property could be used for a service or some type of home occupation could be defined, but just some other adjuvant.
Alright, let me ask the question about not being a non-conforming lot. His grandfather.
The lot's, yep, the lot's grandfather, they just have to make it less non-conforming in existence.
Which they do.
Which they do.
Duplexes can still go on and on.
So, somebody want to make, make a motion?
Well, I, I missed one, so the runoff, you wanted?
Uh, discussion or some kind of summary of where it goes.
Runoff, summary, and the last one?
What you brought up, is it the service or home?
Yes.
For the permit, the application.
Yes.
Document the application to the other service other than residential.
Christina, can you help him with that? Because I, I saw three or four that would be applicable to, to what he does. Can you just steer him in that direction?
Yeah, with you, I'll, I'll help him out.
Yeah. That will cover him.
Just covers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that we move this, uh, we're gonna move it forward to our next meeting on June eleventh.
Yep.
The application is not complete at that, at this time, but we would like to see the boundary survey. We'd like to have clarification on the driveways and where they're gonna go, dimensions, et cetera. We'd like some idea of what the runoff sweep of the land is. Is your survey just a flat, two-dimensional survey?
You showing contours or...
Contours.
I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
Um, it's the cheapest, it's gonna be the cheapest survey you're gonna get, so probably not. They pay for it, so.
Might be able to evaluate the sidewalk too, but it'd be good to have some research there about what his intent is.
It's all knocked out though, I know that, it's all knocked out, yeah.
Just, just need some, some intention of where you're gonna, how things are gonna drain with the driveways.
Right.
Right.
And, and that you apply for a home business, uh, application at the same time. If, whether it's a home business or a service business, discuss that with the co enforcement officer.
Yeah.
So that was my motion.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
There were, I think there's some discussion.
Oh.
I don't think it needs to be necessarily clarified, the septic and well need to be designated?
They are.
Do you want the walkway for the cemetery on the floor?
I think it'll be on the survey plan. He mentioned that that was described.
Yeah.
The well and the septic are shown to be more than a hundred and twenty feet apart.
Yeah.
They already have H H E two hundred four, which shows.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I have a... Do we don't...
Where was that?
Where was that? Yeah, thank you.
Alright, gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
You guys have a good evening.
You too.
See ya.
So I like the happy meal.
Alright, so...
Well, I have a question, but I'm not sure how to, how to phrase this, you know. When we have a, like a non-conforming lot, I thought they were supposed to tear down an existing structure or use part of it? No? Because I see this conflict in our ordinances that says that we don't have to do that.
Yeah, our ordinances are really...
So, so I, I think you could read our ordinances in one way that says, okay, well, he's gonna use part of that structure as his...
Main wall.
Something, you know what?
I know what you're saying.
So do you, do you find that also in these ordinances?
I, I don't know that I do, I, I feel like it's, it's meeting the, the request to make it less non-conforming.
Yeah.
And he's meeting, is he meeting all setbacks?
He is, at this point.
He is, yeah, he's meeting all setbacks.
I think, I think if you have a non-conforming lot and you build a new structure and you meet the current zoning setbacks, then you're good.
Yeah.
It's when you, it's when you, like your other one that you had, that we won't...
Proportional on the sidelines of the road or whatever, yeah.
For instance, and maybe I should've brought it up when the gentleman was here, but if you... Actually, no, I don't even want to talk about that, but if you have something in shoreline zoning very close to the lake...
Yeah, that's different though.
Are they using part of that existing structure? And are they required to?
No. If they tear it, well...
See, the tearing, let's say, let's say hypothetically, somebody tears it down. Are they, aren't they supposed to be using part of it as...
I think the goal is always to make it less non-conforming, so if they can pull it back and then just strip it it down, wouldn't that be better than trying to use the existing structure?
Yeah, that part of...
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but our ordinances are...
Yeah, that section of that non-conformity is the worst written thing.
It is, it's terrible.
And that's state language, believe it or not.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, it's not ours.
To your point, I would like, I don't want to spend a ton of money on attorney, but I would love to have a...
My point being that I've been yelling about?
To your point, I'd love to have a clear...
I've been down the path.
To your point, what are the circumstances that are, you know, leading into that? What are the circumstances that have to be done to, to obtain that restructure or rebuild?
Right.
Repositioning.
Yeah, right.
The reality, the reality of it is that you're better off to tear the entire building down, build a new building, there's, there's no doubt about it. But, yeah, that does lead you down a false path, that part about, about the building being destroyed by fire or damage and, except for the foundation and, yeah, it, it, it really...
Seems to be, it conflicts with itself.
It does, big time. It, it, that had me so...
And I don't know if that's something that we could get. Jeff Kalnich?
What, you want clarification?
Yeah, I think we just kind of want a little bit...
I, I was hoping you guys would have a different advance.
No, we don't, trust me, we're, we're in the same boat as you.
I, I think we rewrite that part of the ordinance so it makes sense to everybody.
I promise you can rewrite it, but you gotta send it to the D P and they may kick it back because they don't like it.
But can I, can I make a statement? And I'm not trying to, got a poor eye. But when you're saying, both of you, both Davids have said, that that ordinance is not worded correctly. You didn't write it. My point being that you can't always rely on the lawyers because they aren't here. They don't know what we need. You can see now because you've used it and it's not fitting.
Right, but that case is not even the attorney's, that's the state.
Yeah.